Request that we all stand up and recite in unison our Pledge of Allegiance. We will follow that with a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated.
Mr. Bob?
Here.
Mr. Fuentes?
Here.
Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Here.
Mr. Recart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Present.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Schultes?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman? Secretary Felix? Junior Counsel Alexis Day?
Here.
Junior Counsel Noah Cronister?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. This time I'll acknowledge that there was not an executive session this evening, and we will move into public comment. The first I have is Mr. Holt. Oh, there you are.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
President. Robert Holt, PO Box 1131, Hanover, Pennsylvania. Sir, I'm gonna renew a previous request I've made in writing in person to the council that when we pass the budget, we put it out for public comment, that it be published on the borough website, the full line item, unexonerated budget, so that the public can understand and see what they're supposed to be commenting on during the public comment period. I would appreciate that. I know you've heard me talk about it a good bit. And then, I've also submitted a right-to-know request. Back in April, the council approved a license fee contract with a company to do boat rentals out at the Long Arm and Shepherd Myers reservoirs, and I would like to see the gross revenue receipts from that license agreement, just the total amount. I just wanna see, what is the price that someone can buy access to a land that's never been developed, has never had any kind of commercial enterprise on it, and it is now, and it is our source of public water, it's the buffer for our public water system that serves not only Hanover but other communities, tens of thousands of people, and I wanna know what the price it takes to get access, unprecedented access, and access without any benefit of a public hearing, that the public could have weighed in on that before the council passed it, and I appreciate your time.
Good. At this time, I'll ask community media to assist me with any online requests addressed council.
In session one of session two.
Those joining us online via Zoom are welcome to unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Seeing none, I'll close public comment portion number one and move into junior counsel person pledges. Counselor Rupp, this is one of your favorite initiatives.
Sure, be happy to.
I'm gonna ask you to administer the oath of office.
I Alexis Day.
I Alexis Day.
Do solemnly pledge.
Solemnly pledge.
That I accept the position.
That I accept the position.
Of Hanover Borough Junior Counsel advisor.
Of Hanover Borough Junior Councilperson.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
And serve borough council meeting rules.
Serve borough council meeting rules.
And actively participate in borough business.
And actively participate in borough business.
I understand I cannot vote on any issue.
I understand I cannot vote on any issue.
And I cannot attend executive sessions.
And I cannot attend executive sessions.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, all right. Do you know it?
I'm watching you.
All right, ready? Okay. I know a Cronister.
I know a Cronister.
Do solemnly pledge.
Do solemnly pledge.
That I accept the position of Hanover Borough Junior Councilperson.
That I accept the position of Hanover Borough Junior Councilposition.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
I promise to attend monthly council meetings.
Observe borough council meeting rules.
Observe borough council meeting rules.
And actively participate in borough business.
And actively participate in borough business.
I understand I cannot vote on any issue.
I understand I cannot vote on any issue.
And I cannot attend executive sessions.
And I cannot attend executive sessions.
Okay, congratulations. All right, Mr. Recart, I'll sign you, all right?
If you sign, then I'll sign.
You're signing. Okay. You wanna sign yours? Oh, that's, wait a minute, it's wrong mine. There we go. You sign yours. There's another copy under here. Sign that one. Okay? And you wanna sign that one here? Before we make this official, council has one more thing we'd like you to consider swearing
to, and it's the most serious of all, and it is, you will not put your lawn chairs out for the Halloween parade.
Before five o'clock.
We're at five o'clock on the day before the parade. You good with that?
They're already out.
Thank you.
They're already out.
Good? Congratulations.
They're already out.
It's all you had to do.
Yeah, I said to her, I said, where's the police? The compass for...
How about one without them?
There you go.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Two less chairs we gotta worry about. Okay, Hanover Economic Development Corporation update. Who's got that one? Good evening. There you are.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bill and I are both here. My name's Doug Becker, and I'm on the economic development council, as is Bill, and obviously we're the last two men standing, so we are here tonight to update the council on what we've been doing, and since we have made a budget request to the council, we thought we should update you on some things we've been doing over the last year. And we made no requests last year, and we've been self-sufficient, and we have been able to raise funds for a number of the things that we've done outside of any borough request that we've made, that we are making. We are working now with the Delta Corporation to develop their strategy and plan for the operations of the HEDC, and we're working to strengthen relationships with the Chamber and with Main Street Hanover, and we do have some rough plans for the theater. As you know, we have the theater, which is great, and we are working diligently. We've had some architectural designs have been presented to us, et cetera, on the theater itself, and we're trying to capture the best concepts possible without going nuts as far as architectural design, et cetera, which could just drive the cost up immensely. And we also have a vendor we're in process of working with for the Goodfield property, and we're working on getting them some permit plans, and hopefully by next spring, they will be up and running over there on Goodfield. That's our update. We are planning to update the council at least twice a year, or if you would demand more often. Maybe I shouldn't say that, but we would, but we would come back to you, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, and Bill will be my backup.
What's your plans for the movie theater?
Say it again.
What's your plans for the theater?
I'm just gonna put it this way. There's been a couple different ideas on the thing that have actually gone farther than we've had in the past. To go into any details would be way too premature. To be candid, the fact that the borough's moving across the alley, the borough offices, et cetera, that could be a good thing for some of the renovations on the, on the theater. Is that fair to say?
That's very good.
And if I say something real wrong, Eric will throw something at me. So, but, other than that, a lot of the details I don't know at this point. We've had preliminary discussions with an architecture firm, and it looks kinda neat, but we all know how those things go, but yeah, that's, we're working on it diligently. That's one of our main goals, because as y'all know, that's our main asset at this point.
Is this something you think you'll have up and going in a couple of years?
Oh, I think that's reasonable, yes.
Bill, do we have his number in our, on our sheet of paper that was given to us?
Which sheet?
Do we have a concurrent telephone?
This one?
Would you like my number?
Yeah. Yes, I would.
Is that, was that a way of asking for that?
[laughing]
717-891-6913.
Well, well, you gotta slow up here.
I would give your email address.
We can provide that, Bill.
Email address?
Well, you can take the email, I need the telephone number.
Eight-nine-what?
It's fine. I mean, I'm, I'm used to being on the other side of the table, I was on planning commission for six years.
Okay. What's that phone number again?
717-891-6913.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, all right, thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
At this time, the chair requests a motion for the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on consent?
[inaudible].
All consenting, i.e. in favor of consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The consent is approved. We will move into reports of standing committees, the first being Water Resources, that being yours truly. I request a second and then your consideration of a motion to approve the submission of the Hanover Borough Water Department's revised drought contingency plan to the Department of Environmental Protection for approval.
Same motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Signify by an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a nay? Motion carries. Secondly, I also request council's ultimate consideration after a second of a motion to approve ordinance number 2373 amending the wastewater pretreatment limits as approved by the Environmental Protection Agency. Any discussion?
Do they go up or down in summary? Yes or no?
I need help with the question. Pretreatment limits generally should go up if anything EPA goes up. Are the limits going up or going down?
Are we gonna do better or worse? We...
So, what it is, some of the requirements are actually more stringent now, so some things will have to be ratcheted back to make sure that they're meeting them. It's more the people who are contributing high-strength waste to our system, more so than us discharging to the creek.
Okay.
But it's, I think there's seventy-some constituents that we have to watch, you know.
So, we'll work together, work with the dischargers to make it work?
I'm sorry?
We'll work with the, those discharging?
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you.
They're aware of it, they ultimately will have to adopt their own ordinances, accepting our pretreatment limits, and then there's, there's rules and regulations in place if they violate that.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve.
Okay, we have the second. We're gonna do this by a roll call. Secretary Felix?
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Recart?
Four.
Mr. Bob?
No.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
The motion passes with nine in favor of and one in opposition.
Thank you. We will move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. Vice President Kress?
Okay, number one, consideration of a motion to ratify the following building construction change order updates for the 33 Frederick Street project. Number one, change order number two, $2,276 for the removal of a wall to relocate existing plumbing vent line. Number two, this is change order number three. Two thousand...
Change order number three. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Can I finish, can I finish reading it first?
Sure.
Give me one second. $2,896 for relocation of panel box including drywall and electrical. Mr. Mains, do you wanna touch on that, so I don't speak out of turn?
So, basically, one of the things that, with the new design and some of the ceiling heights, we had to move one of the electrical panels, so we actually moved it upstairs into a closet area where it's more accessible, and so that meant simply that we had to take some drywall out and electrically move the panel up into that space.
Oh, no. I'm not just on with that one. Number three. Number three.
Change order number five? Item number three, change order number five?
Well, I think this is...
Change order number five.
Okay, let me read, let me read all of them, 'cause I can answer that one.
Oh, you can?
That's a very easy one.
Good, okay.
Change order number five, $12,360 for the upgrade of HVAC rooftop units to the new industrial standard refrigerant. Add that in there. Change order number six, $3,236 for demo of existing bulkhead to accommodate new duck work. Change order number seven is in the positive of $8,585 for deletion of fireproofing below secure storage room. Number five, at the end of the year, R410A will no longer be, you can't order R410A, actually since, I think, September 23rd, which is the refrigerant that's currently in place. The government came out and said that we're changing that refrigerant, so we missed that deadline with this project, so we really didn't have a choice to go to the new refrigerant, which is a good thing.
Blessing of disguise.
Because the price of the refrigerant is gonna go through the roof here January 1, but the new refrigerant will stay decently priced, which will be everything that's changed over. Does that make sense?
You might advance for this one?
Yeah, yeah, I understand, yeah. Okay, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I do attend, just, just a heads up to council, I do attend all the construction meetings on Monday morning at nine o'clock, and as of right now, I'll reiterate what Eric said, these are the times where you're gonna see these change orders, because no one has x-ray vision, and we can't see through the walls. It'll start to clean itself up now, because it's pretty much thinned out over there as far as the demo's done, we're actually rebuilding, but the staff is doing a great job, like as an example, to pick up a change order for $8,000 was, was a good thing on our staff's part.
That was, that's given back, right?
Yeah, so they're definitely, they're definitely, we're definitely holding the contractors for what we're paying for.
Okay.
It's, it's been great.
Okay, is there a second to Counselor Kress?
I'll second, yeah.
Several seconds, you got one of them? Okay. All in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That motion carries. Counselor Kress?
Number two, consideration of a motion to appoint Matthew Perkins as the interim library director and to approve a stipend of $1,000 per month until the library director position is permanently filled.
I'll show motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Number three, consideration of a motion to approve resolution number 1420 to apply for funding through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, for the Main Street Matters Grant for 33 and 44 Frederick Street, Streetscape Parking Lot Improvement Project, in the amount not to exceed $350,000 with a 50% matching split equally from parking meter revenue and Stormwater Authority funds.
I'll second that.
Discussion required?
Because I trust him.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
Put your hand up for nays, I've heard two, I think. One, two. Any other nays? Sounds like it's eight, four, two against. Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Kress. At this time, I will call your attention to management reports. Are there any to illuminate further? Manager Lewis? Nothing to add. That will take us into the second public comment portion of the meeting. In our room, I have Sandy Mao to address council.
Sandy Mao, general delivery. Last week, I attempted to clarify the status of Two Library Place. Tonight, I want to give you the heads up and a request to go back to your committees in the interest of saving time. You can take these questions, this request back, and be ready to answer them next month. There's a need to explain the difference between the Borough of, or the Board of Governors divesting from the borough and the so-called merger of the PA Room with the Historical Society, and a disinvestment action. Explain why the gift of the contents of the PA Room to the Historical Society was identified as a merger, when in reality, it should have been labeled a disinvestment action, to reduce capital expenditures, or to pay off loans, or reduce debt, and there was no appraisal conducted to access, I tried to access it through the right-to-know, and it would cost $36.50 just to view. I couldn't get copies, when the items were in the PA Room, all you had to do was don gloves and work with Wendy Bish, and it's smooth. So, I don't understand why there's secrecy regarding the contents of the PA Room. So, if you could take those questions back, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
We also have Robert Holt for round two. Mr. Holt, you're welcome to come forward and address council.
Thank you, sir. The mere fact that I have to come back up here a second time, the mere fact that I have to ask permission to fill out a form for an open public comment, I find concerning, and the fact we have to continue to hear discussion about restricting and limiting, channeling, shaping, public comment is disturbing, and you spend more time talking about things like Robert's Rules of Order and Parliament Procedure, and I, I really don't get the purpose of it. I feel that, you know, Robert's Rules, Chatham House Rules, Erskine May Parliamentary Procedure, it, it's all worthless, it's all just meaningless protocol and motions. If citizens cannot come here and make meaningful contributions and input, and give their points of views, and, and part of that is, they don't have the information that you have. There's been discussions about the budget in open public forum, but the public can't see these charts, these tables, these numbers. They have no idea, really, and sometimes, I'm not even sure all of you know what you're voting on, and so, I think you need to really take a long, hard, internal reflection about what you're gonna do about public comment, and what you're gonna do about making the people's business, the information that affects their lives, available to them, without having to file right-to-know requests, and without having to come down and beg and borrow, without having been told, you can't have it tonight because this, this, and this, and there's, I and other people have sat in committee meetings and listened to discussions and been told, you can't have access to what we sat here and publicly discussed on the table. Some of you do, some of you are very willing, and I think the planning commission's one of the best, but it doesn't always happen, and it's not consistent, and it doesn't encourage people to come and participate like, you know, you would like them to, and I appreciate your time.
Bill, can, can I make one comment here after Bob just had his say?
It's public comment, not council comment.
Well, I'm public, I'm not, I probably, part of public, I'm not?
Sorry, you're elected not to be public.
Well, I, I'm sorry, you know, I have to ask one question. If we are looking over budget like we did at the finance committee meeting, was it any reason why we could not have shown, Jim, was there any reason why we could not have put that budget from finance last week up on, for everybody that came to the meeting? Would that not have worked, that we could have put those two pages on the screen for the people to see? I think they get lost on what we're looking at, because they don't see it.
It'd be very difficult to see on this, it would be very difficult to see on these small screens. Yeah, I try to make the presentation as big as possible, but it's, it's difficult. I think, I think listening to the discussion about the budget is very important, and trying to understand it, and I try to articulate that at every time that I present it to the, to the council, so I'm trying to be open about budget, but budget is also a work in process.
Right.
We start the budget process in June and July, and it's constantly moving and changing until we get to December. So, the other thing is, if we lay everything out on the table all the time in detail, every time we discuss the budget, it's constantly changing, so, you know, we need to be able to develop our budget over time, present it to the council, so it's, it's, it's difficult to lay everything out when it's a work in process.
Yeah, and I realize that, and I want them to walk with us through that work in process, but there were only two pages involved last week, and that's...
But workshop that we had on the September 24th went into the detail. I gave you the updates.
Right.
Last week's meeting, of what had changed since September 24th. In, in November, I'm gonna drag you through 50 pages at the finance committee meeting. There'd be plenty to look at, plenty to discuss.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just having a problem with the public, you know, because we're talking numbers, and in most people's minds, they cannot hold that information, that we're looking at it on paper, and they're setting back hearing, but they get lost in the numbers, and can't remember everything, and I just thought, since it was more simplified at our finance this past week, that that would have been able to be put up on screen. I'm not trying to make your lives hard, I'm just trying to open it up more clearly for the people to be able to not only hear it, but to see it. I'm not asking about, all those papers that we went to budget workshop on, and, you know, we had a compilation there of a lot, a lot of papers, but I think last week it was, were simplified, and they could have grasped that, but looking at numbers, and hearing it and seeing it are two different things. I just don't know how to make it better for them, and I wish I could. Thank you.
If it helps, Mrs. Funk, the budget process started months ago?
Yes.
Dare I say, halfway through this year, next year's budget process started with staff. At some point, we could call that day one, and at some point, when it is through council and finished, or mostly finished, mostly baked, taken out of the oven, if you will, to make sure that it's done, whatever day that is, that's the day that it goes to the public for the public's inspection.
That's right.
Until that point, I, by hearing your comments, you may be confused, or have a different interpretation of the process than others here, but at, at some point, that, again, that day for the public to have a hands-on copy, to have a involved copy, to have something that they can look at, that they can disseminate, that they can go through and make specific comments about, is coming, is nearly coming, but it's not appropriate to do on day one, and it's certainly not appropriate to do at the 11th hour either, so we're shooting for a point.
You think we're at the 11th hour?
No, 11th hour is December 31st.
Right, right.
You have it 59 p.m.
Well, I just don't know how to make, they want to become part of the budget process, and they're asking questions.
They are part, they are part, and they will be a larger part.
Well, how do they become part if they, if they don't walk the process with us?
Um, I guess...
No, I, I just need to know this, I need...
They will, they will get their day when they're part, they can have all of it, they can see all of it, they can touch it, they can feel it.
But what if they have pertinent questions that could even help us as a council?
They should save their pertinent questions until they have the document to look at. Right now, it says they have to...
But we have, we have info going out, at all, I mean, we're going through this whole process.
We don't have a budget yet.
No, we don't, but I'm saying, can they walk with us? They may have questions that...
They've been with us.
Could be addressed, no, they get lost because they don't see numbers. Last week would have been the perfect time, it was, it was cut short, it was...
What was last week, in your opinion? What, where did it fail?
I think the public heard us, but they, they didn't see the, they didn't see, we simplified it last week, I mean, it was more simplified than I've seen it from the beginning.
What were last week's numbers, in your opinion?
I think they would have opened up for the people to understand more, it was more simplified at that point.
In my opinion, what they were, we spent six hours on a prior occasion in September looking at how the numbers were put together.
Right.
And what our, our finance director presented to us last week was a, an updated version of how some of those original numbers had changed. It was not meant to be anything more than that, and I think that's what he tried to explain to you.
Right, and that's a process, right, we're undergoing the process.
Bill, Bill, let me, you can shed some light on what her opinion is, sure.
Bill, I just wanna, was not the...
More so than us discharging to the creek.
Okay.
But it's, I think there's seventy some constituents that we have to watch.
To make it work.
I'm sorry?
We'll work with those discharging.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, thank you.
They're aware of it, they ultimately will have to adopt their own ordinances, accepting our pre-keeping limits, and then there's rules and regulations in place if they violate that.
Okay, thank you. I move to approve.
Okay, we have the second. We're going to do this by a roll call. Secretary Felix?
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Bob?
No.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Yes.
Mr. Hagberg?
Yes.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
The motion passes with nine in favor of and one in opposition.
Thank you. We will move on to Finance and Personnel Committee. Vice President Kress?
Okay, number one, consideration of a motion to ratify the following building construction change order updates for the thirty-three Frederick Street project. Number one, change order number two, $2,276 for the removal of a wall to relocate existing plumbing vent line. Number two, this is change order number three.
Change order number three. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Can I finish, can I finish reading it first?
Sure.
Give me one second. $2,896 for relocation of panel box including drywall and electrical. Mr. Mainz, do you want to touch on that, so I don't speak out of turn?
So basically, one of the things that, with the new design and some of the ceiling heights, we had to move one of the electrical panels, so we actually moved it upstairs into a closet area where it's more accessible, and so that meant simply that we had to take some drywall out and electrically move the panel up into that space.
Oh, no. I'm not going to show them with that one. Number three. Number three.
Change order number five? Item number three, change order number five?
Well, I think this is Mr. Kress.
Change order number five.
Okay, let me read.
Mr. Kress needs to read it first.
Let me read all of them, because I can answer that one.
Oh, you can.
That's a very easy one.
Good, okay.
Change order number five, $12,360 for the upgrade of HVAC rooftop units to the new industrial standard refrigerant. Add that in there. Change order number six, $3,236 for demo of existing bulkhead to accommodate new ductwork. Change order number seven is in the positive of $8,585 for deletion of fireproofing below secure storage room. Number five, at the end of the year, R410A will no longer be, you can't order R410A, actually since, I think, September twenty-third, which is the refrigerant that's currently in place. The government came out and said that we're changing that refrigerant. So we missed that deadline with this project, so we really didn't have a choice to go to the new refrigerant, which is a good thing.
Bless your disguise.
Because the price of the refrigerant is going to go through the roof here January one, but the new refrigerant will stay decently priced, which will be everything that's changed over. Does that make sense?
You might advance for this one?
Yeah, yeah, I understand. Okay, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I do attend, just a heads up to council, I do attend all the construction meetings on Monday morning at nine o'clock, and as of right now, I'll reiterate what Eric said, these are the times where you're going to see these change orders, because no one has x-ray vision and we can't see through the walls. It'll start to clean itself up now, because it's pretty much thinned out over there as far as the demo's done, we're actually rebuilding. But the staff is doing a great job, like as an example, to pick up a change order for $8,000 was a, was a good thing on our staff's part.
That was, that's given back, right.
Yeah, so they're definitely, they're definitely, we're definitely holding the contractors for what we're paying for.
Okay.
It's, it's been great.
Okay, is there a second to Counselor Kress?
I'll second, yeah.
Several seconds, you've got one of them? Okay. All in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? That motion carries.
Number two, consideration of a motion to appoint Matthew Perkins as the interim library director and to approve a stipend of $1,000 per month until the library director position is permanently filled.
I'll show motion.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consideration, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Number three, consideration of a motion to approve resolution number fourteen-twenty to apply for funding through the Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED, for the Main Street Matters Grant for thirty-three and forty-four Frederick Street, Streetscape Parking Lot Improvement Project, in the amount not to exceed $350,000 with a 50% matching split equally from parking meter revenue and Stormwater Authority funds.
I'll second that.
Discussion required? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
No.
Put your hand up for nays, I've heard two, I think. One, two. Any other nays? Sounds like it's eight, four, two against. Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Kress. At this time, I will call your attention to management reports. Are there any to illuminate further? Manager Lewis? Nothing to add. That will take us into the second public comment portion of the meeting. In our room, I have Sandy Mau to address council.
Sandy Mau, general delivery. Last week, I attempted to clarify the status of Two Library Place. Tonight, I want to give you the heads up and a request to go back to your committees in the interest of saving time. You can take these questions, this request back, and be ready to answer them next month. There's a need to explain the difference between the Borough of, or the Board of Governors divesting from the Borough and the so-called merger of the P.A. Room with the Historical Society and a disinvestment action. Explain why the gift of the contents of the P.A. Room to the Historical Society was identified as a merger when in reality it should have been labeled a disinvestment action to reduce capital expenditures or to pay off loans or reduce debt. And there was no appraisal conducted to access, I tried to access it through the right-to-know, and it would cost $36.50 just to view. I couldn't get copies, right, and when the items were in the P.A. Room, all you had to do was don gloves and work with Wendy Bish, and it's smooth. So I don't understand why there's secrecy regarding the contents of the P.A. Room. So if you could take those questions back, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
We also have Robert Holt for round two. Mr. Holt, you're welcome to come forward and address council.
Thank you, sir. The mere fact that I have to come back up here a second time, the mere fact that I have to ask permission to fill out a form for an upping public comment, I find concerning. And the fact we have to continue to hear discussion about restricting and limiting, channeling, shaping, public comment is disturbing. And you spend more time talking about things like Robert's Rules of Order and Parliament Procedure, and I, I really don't get the purpose of it. I feel that, you know, Robert's Rules, Chatham House Rules, Erskine May Parliamentary Procedure, it's all worthless, it's all just meaningless protocol and motions. If citizens cannot come here and make meaningful contributions and input and give their points of views, and, and part of that is, they don't have the information that you have. There's been discussions about the budget in open public forum, but the public can't see these charts, these tables, these numbers. They have no idea, really, and sometimes, I'm not even sure all of you know what you're voting on. And so, I think you need to really take a long, hard, internal reflection about what you're going to do about public comment and what you're going to do about making people's business, the information that affects their lives, available to them without having to file right-to-know requests and without having to come down and beg and borrow, without having been told, you can't have it tonight because this, this, and this. And there's, I and other people have sat in committee meetings and listened to discussions and been told, you can't have access to what we sat here and publicly discussed on the table. Some of you do, some of you are very willing, and I think the Planning Commission's one of the best, but it doesn't always happen and it's not consistent, and it doesn't encourage people to come and participate like, you know, you would like them to. And I appreciate your time.
Bill, can, can I make one comment here after Bob just had your say?
It's public comment, not council comment.
Or not, I probably, part of public, I'm not?
You're elected not to be public.
Well, I, I'm sorry, you know, I have to ask one question. If we are looking over budget like we did at the finance committee, meeting, was it any reason why we could not have shown, Jim, was there any reason why we could not have put that budget from finance last week up on, for everybody that came to the meeting? Would that not have worked, that we could have put those two pages on the screen for the people to see? I think they get lost on what we're looking at, because they don't see it.
It'd be very difficult to see on this, it would be very difficult to see on these small screens. Yeah, I try to make the presentation as big as possible, but it's, it's difficult. I think, I think listening to the discussion about the budget is very important, and trying to understand it, and I try to articulate that at every time that I present it to the, to the council. So I'm trying to be open about budget. But budget is also a work in process.
Right.
We start the budget process in June and July, and it's constantly moving and changing until we get to December. So the other thing is, if we, we lay everything out on the table all the time in detail, every time we discuss the budget, it's constantly changing. So, you know, we need to be able to develop our budget over time, present it to the council. So it's, 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 it's difficult to lay everything out when it's a work in process.
Yeah, and I realize that, and I want them to walk with us through that work in process, but there were only two pages involved last week, and that's.
The workshop that we had on the September twenty-fourth went into the detail. I gave you the updates.
Right.
Last week's meeting, of what had changed since September twenty-fourth. In, in November, I'm going to drag you through fifty pages at the finance committee meeting. There'd be plenty to look at, plenty to discuss.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just having a problem with the public, you know, because we're talking numbers, and in most people's minds, they cannot hold that information that, we're looking at it on paper, and they're setting back hearing, but they get lost in the numbers and can't remember everything. And I just thought, since it was more simplified at our finances past week, that that would have been able to be put up on screen. I'm not trying to make your lives hard, I'm just trying to open it up more clearly for the people to be able to not only hear it, but to see it. I'm not asking about, all those papers that we went to budget workshop on, and, you know, we had a compilation there of a lot, a lot of papers, but I think last week it was, were simplified, and they could have grasped that. But looking at numbers and hearing it and seeing it are two different things. I just don't know how to make it better for them, and I wish I could. Thank you.
If it helps, Mrs. Funk, the budget process started months ago?
Yes.
Dare I say, halfway through this year, next year's budget process started with staff. At some point, we could call that day one, and at some point, when it is through council and finished, or mostly finished, mostly baked, taken out of the oven, if you will, to make sure that it's done, whatever day that is, that's the day that it goes to the public for the public's inspection. Until that point, I, by hearing your comments, you may be confused or have a different interpretation of the process than others here, but at, at some point, that, again, that day for the public to have a hands-on copy, to have a involved copy, to have something that they can look at, that they can disseminate, that they can go through and make specific comments about, is coming, is nearly coming. But it's not appropriate to do on day one, and it's certainly not appropriate to do at the eleventh hour either. So we're shooting for a point.
You think we're at the eleventh hour?
No, eleventh hour is December thirty-first.
Right, right.
You have in fifty-nine P.M.
Well, I just don't know how to make, they want it to become part of the budget process, and they're asking questions.
They are part, they are part, and they will be a larger part.
Well, how do they become part if they, if they don't walk the process with us? No, I, I just need to know this, I need.
They will get their day when they're part, they can have all of it, they can see all of it, they can touch it, they can feel it.
But what if they have pertinent questions that could even help us as a council?
They should save their pertinent questions until they have the document to look at. Right now, it's just asking questions.
But we have, we have info going out at all, I mean, we're going through this whole process.
We don't have a budget yet.
No, we don't, but I'm saying, can they walk with us? They may have questions that could be addressed. No, they get lost because they don't see numbers. Last week would have been the perfect time, it was, it was cut short.
What was last week, in your opinion? What, where did it fail?
I think the public heard us, but they, they didn't see the, they didn't see, we simplified it last week. I mean, it was more simplified than I've seen it from the beginning.
What were last week's numbers, in your opinion?
I think they would have opened up for the people to understand more, it was more simplified at that point.
In my opinion, what they were.
I really do.
We spent six hours on a prior occasion in September, looking at how the numbers were put together.
Right.
And what our, our finance director presented to us last week was a, an updated version of how some of those original numbers had changed. It was not meant to be anything more than that, and I think that's what he tried to explain to you.
Right, and that's a process, right, we're undergoing the process.
Bill, you can shed some light on what her opinion is, sure.
Bill, I just want to, was not the meeting on the twenty-fourth a public meeting?
They're all public meetings.
Was Mr. Holt was there and others?
They're all public meetings.
No, not a lot.
So I, I point that out to, you know, if we really want to get down in the, in the nuts and bolts of this, those are public meetings, and they're, you know, welcome to attend.
It's also recorded.
Of course.
But not many, right, they are.
So I, you know, there's a practicality side of this.
Are they online for everybody to come in and see?
No, they can view it at home on their computer.
Online, online.
They're online, they can view it at home, in their pajamas, on their computer.
Okay, all right. But, you know, when we simplify something like last week, it was, it was, it was, you know, Jim did a good job.
Yeah, but again, last week was just the changes to the long meeting that he brought you up to date, and, and you will get more of that in another month. That's how a budget comes together. It's a process that culminates at the end of it to where, once we are done with the budget for you, then it gets released to the public for the public's comment and the public's approval. I'm sorry if there are people who feel that they should be in on step one, but I do not agree with that opinion, and we have a process by which we are executing the proper and legal preparation of the budget for this political entity. And I will stand by that.
Well, step one, when we had it, and it was an all-day affair, correct?
September.
That was heavy. Yeah, that was, that was very heavy. And I do notice that it's online, but some people don't quite understand the whole thing. It was just that last week was such an opportunity, because it was brought down so simplified at that point where if people didn't understand, and a lot of them don't, Bill, you know this.
No, I understand.
Okay, that step one is really hard, but when we ease it and show a simpler version just for part two?
Yeah.
That it could have been up on the screen somehow, that they could have, you know, saw it visually, and a lot of people can't attend those meetings, because they work. So, you know, we carry that weight, we do as, as a council.
In the world we live, Counselor Funk, everyone, we, we work 24/7, and we have to meet in public at a certain designated time and place, and I like to believe that if you really want to be here, you could. I also like to believe that if you really wanted to look at what we're doing, you could follow up with everything that's recorded and put online. We're not, we're not having secret meetings.
No, and I, I never said, I never said we were.
Mr. Holt is a perfect example. He's, he's a man with a professional job and is interested slash concerned with this, and makes the effort and is here, well, he was here the whole day in September.
No, he, he couldn't make it, he went to work.
I apologize, but, I mean, he is here more than anyone else, you know, so it's doable.
Well, if there is a way that when we get to the more simplified version, that we, you know, when we have that meeting at finance, that we could put it up on the screen, it was only two pages, it would have been understood. And there are people that, that do come in, they're listening, and I get comments from people who have said, oh, yes, I was there, I watched. They didn't respond, but they watched.
And I get comments from multiple individuals who think we're doing an outstanding stellar job.
I didn't say we weren't.
I guess it's a matter of who we speak to.
I hope I'm not offending anybody. What I'm trying to do is just to make it easier for the people of our town that can't or don't understand when it comes to the budget at the very beginning, that if we simplify it once or twice before we finally get to the, the end of the budget that we have it finalized, that they might participate and understand it better. In other words, we didn't have, you do understand, Bill?
No, I, I do, I do.
We work hard, we work hard, people don't see the, the hours put in, that we do put in, but what I'm saying is, I just want to help them, and if we have, once or twice, we bring it up and Jim's simplified it.
Do they ever give you specific questions, or they just always come under the, I don't understand something? Or do they say, why are you spending this $21,000 on this rec project? I mean, are there questions at that detail, or are they just, I don't know?
They, if, yes, if, if they, well, they come to me with different questions.
There's two reasons to ask a question. One, you don't understand, and two, you can't understand, and I'm trying to figure out where the questions, what the nature of them are.
Some of them say they do not understand the budget as it's presented when we get together for that first time, well.
Like the big version, the six-hour, the whole, the?
But it's the simplification that they would have liked to have seen it, but some of them just feel that that's better for them.
Yes, then they're welcome to follow along in the discussion process, and when council has done its responsibility, and that's our job, to get the budget to a point where we are comfortable with it, because that's what we've been elected to do, we then in turn release that version to the public, and the public is welcome to study it, memorize it, chew it up, spit it out, ask questions, whatever. But that does not mean that the public is engaged with creating the budget from day one, that's what my earlier comment.
Yeah, oh, no, no, they're not, they're not.
One's going to agree on that process.
But, but the last week would have been the opportune time to let them see a simplified breakdown, and that, the majority of them would have understood, and that's all they're asking, and, and when they heard the numbers, when they heard the numbers, they couldn't visualize what the papers were showing.
Yeah, because they didn't see the packet.
Right, and, and the only thing I'm saying, at that point, would it have been, could we have put it on the screen for those to see that we're here?
Nobody here.
Those two, those two simplified versions.
I would say this, though, that the, the opportunity for that was the longer meeting to kind of see how it was all put together, and then last week was just the update to that. So I don't think last week was maybe going to give you what you thought. It was simpler, it was smaller, it was more condensed.
Right, that's what they want. They, they don't want the, they don't want this long, broken-down version, you know, where we break it in part, and it's page after page after page. They said, give us a simplified version. They heard, but they could not visualize it, see it, and that's all I'm saying. Would have been possible to give them at least some idea of the simplified version to, you know, to have them begin to understand, because that's what they want to do. So, you know, I'm only bringing that up for discussion, maybe we can approve it for our people.
I think we need to always.
Can I make a motion that if this is?
Well, we're not in a, we're public comment, so I can't make that motion, sorry.
Can I make a public comment? That if this is such an issue, that maybe Mrs. Funk could leave a group to come up with a recommendation on how to do something with this that's easier for non-finance people or whatever to, to, to grasp.
Thank you, yes.
I would add to that, that I think that he's done an excellent job with the budget this year, it's a whole lot easier to understand this year than it is out there.
Absolutely.
It's pretty easy to understand.
Second your motion without a doubt.
Very clear where our money comes, very, very clear where our money goes, it's not a whole bunch of other little accounts. I think he's done an excellent job preparing our budget.
Because we're starting at the top and working down, and years prior, we started it, it was 187 pages, and you, you, you never get to the end.
It's pretty simple, he said where, how much money we have, how much we're going to spend, and how much we need. I mean, that's what a budget is.
And council decides what those percentages and allocations are. Like I said to you when you had a question the last time, you know, that's what we're elected to do. You talk to your people, you hear what their concerns are and their input, and then you, as a counselor, have to make a decision on these matters, which reflect, hopefully, the will of the people, some common sense and some financial responsibility. And then that's how we work through that budget. And then, to tie that with what I said to you this evening, we get that to a point where it's relatively been baking in the oven, and we pull it out and look at it, and then we give it to the public. We don't want to give it to the public, you know, in haphazard form, we want to try to be responsible to give it to them in a form that we feel is our, we've done our level best to give them a budget that is responsible.
Nor do we want to have, like, talk about revision control with, with drawings, Bill, you can relate with that.
Certainly.
What we don't want to have is fifteen iterations of the budget that are out there, and people like, well, no, this says seventeen, oh, but I'm on revision C, and we're on revision L, or.
That gets even more confusing when you're trying to communicate.
That is correct, and that's a huge issue when you, you get into it. You know what I'm saying, understand what I'm saying, Darlene?
I do.
What I'm saying to you, Scott, okay, is that it would not have hurt to have shown it on the screen last week, a simplified version, that almost all the people of our community would understand, with the understanding that this is a work in progress.
I understand that, but how many people were here?
And when it was brought up, when it was brought up vocally, verbally, some of the, the majority of your people cannot visualize what is being said, had those two.
I understand that, but the majority of people aren't here.
And, and that's why we're online with them, that's why they're online.
How many people are online right now? How many? One.
You have one, Walter?
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to make fun of this, but Mr. Holt, you know, has put in a thousand percent effort, or maybe it's only 600%, I don't know, but I don't, see the room isn't teeming with people. I, you know, I don't mean to downplay what you're saying, but if they have questions, they can contact their counselors, who can talk to him.
And we are being, we are being contacted. They're saying, why didn't, you know, why don't we see the paper in process?
I would go back to what I said, where if, if you want to lead a, a focus group or whatever, then I think that would be good, but I don't think we're going to resolve that here.
No, we're not, not tonight.
Okay, we're not, yeah, this, this is getting into an area where we should not be staying too long.
Is there anyone online, that one individual, would like to address council?
One person. He's still, he's mooring. He's mooring. He fell asleep.
Those people hung up, I bet it was here, hung up.
No takers? I will close public comment and call your attention to meetings for next month, and the fact that we have a Halloween parade tomorrow night. I hope to see the mayor waving at me, and we will maybe move on. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Post? Have a safe Halloween.